Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to an end. This is Delaware County Commissioners Meeting. It's January 21st, 2020 times 9:04. Let's all stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Steve, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Reagan.
President.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Mr. Rett.
Here.
Thank you. Appointments, we have the Creed, Creed Board.
I spoke with Ted Baker and he's interested in serving on this board. So I'd make a motion to add Ted Baker to the Creed Board.
Second then.
I have a motion and a second to add Ted Baker to the Creed Board. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner, can you help on this appointment?
I believe it's...
Is it annual?
Brad, is it annual or is it a point year?
You know, I'm not 100% sure. I'm looking at Joe now, wondering if...
I would say it's annual appointment. I believe Creed Board, yeah, it's...
Yeah.
Yeah. I can verify that, though, just to be clear. But I'm trying to say it on my memory. I believe, because we just had to appoint the other ones. And we had Leslie that...
Will you let Denise, do you let Denise know, Joe?
I will.
Thank you. Okay, the Fair Board, we had some issues with those appointments. So the ones that we did appoint still stand, however, we failed to appoint three others. One is Tam Reader, the other's Tom Rector, and the third is Bob Brown.
Move that, Seth.
Second.
A motion and a second, roll call, please.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Approval of the minutes from December 3rd, 2019, in special meeting, and also January 6th, 2020 meeting.
I was trying to think on that January 6th. Did we get that correct?
Yeah, you gave me all these and I changed them.
Move that, Seth.
Second.
I have a motion to approve both sets of minutes and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Denise, those are annual appointments.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Presentation to the Commissioners. Sheriff Skinner.
Tony Skinner, Delaware County Sheriff. I don't know, it's a presentation. We left a contract out last month that should've been approved for this year for the jail mental health services by Dr. Hatfield. This is an annual contract, issue's contract. The terms are exactly the same as last year, so it's just an oversight on my part. I apologize, it should've been done last month, so we're asking for your approval.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the inmate mental health agreement. A second roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thank you, Sheriff. Open the rail spur loading area bids, Brad Bookout.
Yeah, Commissioners, good morning. Brad Bookout, Delaware County Economic Development. Your attorney, Joe Retsch, has the bids and I'll have him open them at this time.
All right, it looks like we have two bids for this project. The first is from VTF Excavation LLC. Was there just one number, Brad?
Yes.
Just one, okay. It looks like the bid from VTF Excavation, the total bid amount is $459,476.66. Second bid is from United Destruction Services LLC. Bid amount is $359,250.
Commissioners, I just asked, as you take the bids under advisement at this time, Charlie Starling from Engineering Company, CHA, is here. He will review them and then if they meet your approval, pass them along to the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission for their consideration.
Make a motion to take them under advisement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, take them under advisement. Roll call, please.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have the Wheeling Avenue Intersection Improvements, Angie.
Yes, Commissioners, I advertise for intersection improvements, Wheeling at Moore Road, Ian at Wheeling Actors Boulevard. Bids were due the 17th by noon. I'd like to have Joe open the bids and...
All right, it looks like we have three for this one. First is from Morphe Construction Incorporated.
Who's that again, Joe?
Morphe, M-O-R-P-H-E-Y Construction Incorporated. It sounds like there's going to be two separate numbers in here.
No, it'll be one, it's just two intersections.
All right, it looks like the Morphe Construction bid amount is $585,000 even. Next bid is from 3D Company Incorporated. All right, this one, 3D's bid is $457,000 even. And last is from E&amp;B Paving Incorporated. Awesome. Okay, and this one. E&amp;B Paving bid is $504,082.75.
Commissioners, I recommend taking under advisement something to do.
So move.
Second.
Motion to take those bids under advisement and a second roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Bid tabulation sheets for the Wheeling Avenue between St. Edward 28 and 950 North and E Wheeling Park, Angie.
Commissioner, I've provided you the bid tab sheets and Brooks is the lowest bidder and I don't want to speak too much about it, but he would recommend that you award it to Brooks and he has elected to choose alternate number one for the Wheeling Avenue project. And if you concur, there's an agreement to be signed.
Bob, do you have anything to add?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve Brooks and a second roll call, please.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Angie, have we heard if, getting in at this early, if it gets on top of the list?
Oh, we have a deadline of July 1st, it has to be completed.
Okay, very good. Utility works about finished, is it?
Are you talking about the Wheeling or the one we just approved?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, the Wheeling.
Yes, they have a completion date. Yes, this is someone who can be completed by, most utilities are completed, there's a sign up process.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda pertaining to that?
Yes.
Okay. You don't have anything to say, Bob?
Pardon?
You don't have anything to say? Blue and Company EMS, Mike Ashley.
Hi, Mike Ashley, Delaware County EMS. We're looking to renew our contract with a company called Blue and Company. We've been working with them for, I believe, 14 or 15 years. Basically, we signed a contract with them for flat rate, $4,000. And what they do, they try to get us more reimbursed from Medicare, I'm sorry, Medicaid. And basically, we fill out all this information, they send us every year, and they're taking the true cost of our operations versus our reimbursements. And generally, they give us back quite a bit of money for that investment. We've seen substantial amounts and we've seen smaller amounts, but still way more than the contract. So that's why we're seeking approval for that contract for this year.
We worked with them for quite a while.
I believe 14 or 15 years.
Yeah, I've been in meetings with them, they seem okay with the vision. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve that agreement, the Blue and Company agreement, and a second roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Thank you. We have IBM Business Associate Addendum, Luke Big Blue Diamond, Jim Fluke.
Yes, Jim Fluke from the IT. What you have is a addendum to the agreement to IBM, and it's just where they're asking for the county to approve, because occasionally when they have to come in and do any diagnostics on the system, potentially there could be some different information on our system that's just clearing them for that access. We can use them before, but yeah, we're using them now for all of our, our, our needs.
Make a motion to approve. We have a motion to approve the addendum.
Second.
And a second, roll call, please.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Okay, we have the Nottingham Platte, Kathy from Action Surveyors.
Come on.
Hi.
Hi. Last month, or last week, no, last meeting, two weeks ago, I brought in the Nottingham Platte and dedicated the road right of way, but this is the remainder of the property of the 80 acres that Mr. Nottingham has. I have the deed that I need to have you accept the rest of the right of way of Nevo Road.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve that. Platte, roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
The second part of this, Bob, this is about Bonterra subdivision. You should have in your folder, I hope, copies of the Bonterra subdivision. What we are doing now is dedicating the remainder of Island Way and Clear Lane, or Clear Lake. We are in the process of going through the full subdivision and right now, we are to the point where there might be a few changes, but I, hopefully, we are done. I think we've tried to get everything put together, so.
Make a motion to approve.
Martha...
Yeah.
This has been in front of the Platte, Martha Moody, Platte Commission Office, this has been in front of the Platte Committee, and like Kathy said, she's, they've tried to get through everything that the Platte Committee is requiring, and one of those requirements is acceptance of the public improvements, the roads, by the Commissioners. But when the Platte Committee finalizes their review, there may be a change to the signature page, which means she wants to get your signatures on that page, but if there is a change that the Platte Committee requires, don't, it means that you'll have to, like, re-sign them. So I guess I'm saying, don't be surprised, it's not Kathy's fault, it's the Platte Committee. And then the other thing with the acceptance of the roads, E&amp;B has provided a letter that's in the file and provided it to Angie Meyer stating that they will guarantee the maintenance of the, or correction of any failures of the road for one year. So it's like a maintenance bond based on charity from E&amp;B.
Bob and I put the roads up, I can maybe accept them into our county road system, then I can turn it into NDOT for certification, so it'll receive money for it.
All right, so James made the motion, seconded by Sherry, with Bonterra subdivision. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last one is for the Led Singer subdivision, it's a one acre, or 1.88 acre lot on County Road 700, 700 North. This is, again, we're dedicating the road right of way, right there on 700 in front of that lot.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and second, the Led Singer Roadway Right Of Way subdivision there. Roll call, please.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Department Heads, elected officials. We have a proclamation to read here, Delaware County School Week, whereas all the children in Delaware County should have access to the highest quality education possible, whereas Delaware County recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in Delaware County to be successful adults, and whereas the quality of education is critically important to the economic vitality of the Delaware County, whereas Delaware County is home to a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to the families who educate their children in the home. And whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community, and whereas Delaware County has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children, and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now therefore, we, the Delaware County Commissioners, do hereby recognize January 26th through February 1st, 2020, as Delaware County School Choice Week, and I call this observation to the attention of all our citizens dated this 14th day of January 2020. I'll make a motion to approve the January 26th through February 1st, to recognize as Delaware County School Choice Week.
As of this 21st day of January.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Hey, any other Department Heads or elected officials? Paul, you want to give us an update? Issues, dispatch?
Yeah, Paul Singleton, Director of 911. Our boiler failed us over the weekend. Shout out to Resoltech and Ron Crouch and his crew. They got us a new boiler onsite and it worked until 2:30 this morning and it's up and going and we got heat. So, authorized on that emergency repair and whoever Charlie is, I woke him up a couple times during the middle of the night and so, but they just did a great job getting stuff and going.
What was the, what was the cost on that?
I believe it's gonna come in about $18,400.
Okay. Paul and Charlie worked hard on that on their day off and I appreciate that and appreciate the phone calls and...
Got extremely chilly in there and I'm more than happy when they got some back. I went and got some electric heaters temporarily and warmed it up, but the EMA side especially, it was like a meat locker on the outside.
Well, thanks for your work on it.
You're welcome, thank you for your...
Thanks for the team effort, appreciate it.
Good morning, Jeff McHirry, IT. I've got some quotes for you guys to review real quick. This quote is from Trace 3 Technologies, this is for infrastructure-related equipment. We've been discussing this with you guys off and on for past several months. We just got this quote yesterday. Talked to Jenny and she advised me to run it through the meeting just because of the dollar amount and the time-sensitive nature of this. So we were able to negotiate some pretty steep discounts through the manufacturer. The manufacturer's end of year is January, so if we can get this approved, we can save about $90,000 versus, you know, waiting till February. So the subtotals are broken up, some of this goes into different budgets, so I've broken that up for you guys into three different subtotals. The switch subtotal, which is the greatest amount, is directly related to the phone project, which the cable vendor will be completing the cabling for this building in the next few weeks, so we need to get these switches ordered so we can get that project taken care of so he can complete his work, which is to remove the cabling once, once we get this equipment installed.
And this is for the new butt lines that...
Yes, so this is...
...here at this building.
Correct, so the switches are, so we can have phone connectivity. The current switches don't support any sort of modern phone system, so this would be to replace that. This is also, the server subtotal, which comes out of the IT budget, is for hardware replacements. Those servers are gonna be into support very soon, we need to get those replaced. Part of that is also, right now, we're running on six separate hosts, so we're consolidating to four. Some of the public safety stuff will be merged into this to save, to save money. There's no legal requirement that those be separated on the different hardware. This is gonna be a lot better supported solution for public safety as well as, as the county, so. And then the firewall subtotal, so with the new connectivity going in at the new IGC, some of these fire, half of the firewalls, there's four firewalls, two will be placed at the new Justice Center and two will be placed here to replace the current firewall, which won't work for the new network setup.
Jim? Do we have some of this money in our edit or...
I assume that the other plan that was presented, that there was money in those funds, I just received a copy of this this morning, too, so I haven't had a chance to work through it completely.
$67,000.
Yeah.
So we knew it was coming.
Yeah, we presented, edited budgetary requests last year and then talking to Jenny a couple of weeks ago, we did check to make sure that the fund should be available.
I move accept proposal, $362,767.8.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the proposal, just Trace 3.
Trace 3 is the, is the reseller.
A motion to approve and a second, roll call, please.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. And you guys will stay on top of this to make sure we get everything outlined in this quote, correct?
Yes, absolutely. All the equipment will be delivered here and, you know, we need to help every bit of this equipment to make it work, so if something is left off, then that's gonna be a major problem, so we'll definitely be on top of it.
All right, thank you. Anybody else, Department Head, elected officials? I'd like to make a couple of comments after we had a, somebody write a post concerning the Justice Center. Last week, we had the Department Corrections that actually came out toward the facility with the Commissioners, the Sheriff, and some people from RQAW. When DOC left after tourin' our facility, they did make the comments that we will be a model jail for other counties to come in and look at. They also made the comment that we will actually probably end up with be a national facility that people will come in and look at. And I will explain to people also that, that the state actually also come in and placed a tax that we would also not have to do a referendum. The Delaware County Council could've accepted this tax, that would've generated, I believe is close to $4 million to pay for this facility. Once again, the Commissioners, we did our due diligence and we decided not to raise taxes on the citizens of Delaware County. The city raised enough taxes, raised the taxes in the edit, which then in return, gave us enough money to fund this project that we are doing. So there was some comments that was also made, so I don't know if these people actually wanted us to raise taxes to build this facility that we was going to have to build anyways because of the 13 lawsuits that we had pending against us. If anybody goes over to the jail that we have now, yes, it costs $63 million at the end of the day, but the $63 million that was discussed in this, I forgot to mention that, it was for 110 beds. The facility that we are creating is over 500 beds, plus not only the courts will be in there, anything that you has to do with the Justice Center in Delaware County is going to be inside that building. Plus, you will have room to grow, so other Commissioners or whoever will sit in these seats will not go through the same thing that we have to go through. There's 22 acres out there, so you can build on to this facility. Hopefully, we don't have to, but you never know. People talk about mental health, but the Commissioners and the Sheriff, we are working with a group now to possibly bring in a mental health facility into this project. And it just won't be for prisoners, what we have been discussing, that if somebody would like to go check themselves in, they will be able to do so. It's one of those things where social media, people don't get the whole story, they don't understand it. We've offered to take people on visits out there so they can tour the facility. It is something that was much needed, because like I said, we had the lawsuits, they were set up, if people don't understand, contact Henry and County, because I believe they're gonna end up, and they've already been to federal court over some of their lawsuits. What we have across the street is when... What we have across the street is when, at that point in time, when the Commissioners allowed the federal courts to take over, and look what we ended up with. We went to a build operate transfer to where we have a certain amount that we go to, anything over that amount, the company eats, we don't. So if it ends up, and they come down to us in a sixty billion dollar project, that company has to eat anything over what our contract says. So we did our due diligence, we did what needed to be done, we did not raise taxes, because like I said, when the city went in and they did their, their low tax, they raised edit tax, which then gave us enough money to where we can do the project. I wish before people would actually write their articles, or they go on social media and they post this stuff, do a little research, contact one of the Commissioners. If you want to take a tour of the jail, contact us, we can arrange it. We're not hiding anything, we do our jobs, and for this person to write this article without having everything was wrong, you know, he makes it sound like we did the same stuff the city of Muncie did. We didn't. We did everything that needed to be done, we did not raise taxes. Number one, we did not raise taxes. If the city didn't raise the edit tax like they did, we would have never had the money to do the project. People need to understand that. Yes, we can still do projects, and people have to also understand that we've actually already got some counties that are interested in bringing inmates to our facilities, which then we can charge them, and there's a possibility other counties could end up and pay for our jail, just like over the last few years. I think we helped pay for Cosiaco County's jail, I believe we, J County, we helped pay for their jail, because we pay out between five hundred thousand and three, and three quarters of a million dollars a year housing our inmates out of county. So add that up, ever since we've had this over here, I worked there, Sheriff Skinner worked there, we have always had the house inmates out of county since that's been built. With what we are doing now, we're not going to be able to, we're not, we don't have to use those funds anymore, those funds can go back, revert back to the general fund for other things. So, you know, for somebody to insinuate, the Commissioners, number one, didn't do our due diligence, and then they say, more or less, we didn't listen to the community. Yeah, we listened to the community, but some things that we do up here, people have to understand, I, I mean, we didn't want to build a new jail, it was something that had to be done. We stuck to our guns, and we did it. And we did it to save the community money. We have the tax dollars through the edit to pay for it. So before anybody goes on social media and wants to bash us three up here, do your homework. Figure things out. You know, we're going to have a facility out here, and they say it is going to cost us sixty-three million dollars, but like I said, it's going to house everything that has to do with the Justice Center. And the sixty-three million dollars is interest tacked on, but it's a facility with over five hundred beds. You have your prosecutor, you have your court, you have probation, you have the Sheriff's Department, you have everything to do with the Justice Center that's going to be sitting out there. Plus, you don't have to drive around for twenty or thirty minutes to try to find a parking space when you've got to go to court, there's parking space out there where you can go. It's going to have everything, and plus, like I said, space for expansion. So, you know, do your homework a little bit better before you want to go in and post stuff on, on social media. Like I said, contact one of the Commissioners. We have no problem with taking anybody out there and running them through it, because we have nothing to hide. Would you three agree?
Absolutely.
You know, so...
It was a poorly written...
Yes, it was.
...article, and, you know, that's what social media is for, is so people who are scared to confront you in person can get on Facebook and other social media sites and bash you and talk bad about you, because...
Yeah, because there were some of them that was on there that I know in the past, I invited them to go out and walk around the jail. I told them I'd sit down, we'd have a cup of coffee or whatever, we'd discuss it. Oh, no, 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 we understand, Commissioner King. No. But then they go on social media and they want to bash you, it's, it's different when they confront you face to face.
We're just about named in that article, so go away on comments in the article, but...
But...
That's what social media is for.
It's just one of those things, do your homework, figure out what was done, you know, before you have a couple beers and sit down at your computer and start typing something up. But we did do our due diligence, and I don't know about the other two, but I stand behind the project that we're doing.
Absolutely, a hundred percent.
Yes, I, the gentleman that came from the DOC, they were maintenance from the facility division of the DOC, and they were very impressed and did congratulate us on a project that served the public well. Future generations.
It's a great project.
And there was a lady that reached out to me Sunday that I had a conversation with her. They're going to go out, probably next week, and they're going to tour the jail. You know, we've also invited the Governor to come out and tour, the committee, the jail committee that the state has, we've sent damn emails, we've invited them to come out and tour. You know, we're doing what needs to be done, because honestly, if we didn't do this, the building would probably sit out there in rock, because I don't know anybody that would have went in there and purchased the building. You know, I just, and if this was built from the ground up, and we've said it several times, it's going to cost double of what we're doing now, if not more. So like I said, do your homework before you go on social media and just start bashing, because none of us have done anything wrong. None of us are under investigation. None of us have been indicted. None of our Department Heads have been indicted, and we just had our treasurer up here. We don't have to borrow money, because our treasurer, our auditor's office, they all work together, and, you know, and then people want to talk about politics, but our auditor is Democrat. Our treasurer is Republican, you guys working hand in hand, right Steve? And that's what we do here at the county level, we're not out here to get rich, we're out here to do the right thing, you know? And it was said at one point in time, to get out of politics to be rich, you become a crook. None of us, we are. So don't bash us. If you've got people up here that's doing their job and doing what's right for the community, that the county doesn't have to borrow money, we're in good shape because of our Department Heads, because of the way everybody works together at the county. So like I said...
Just add to that, there, you guys that come to the meetings all the time know all the public input we had about this project, and, and you watched it throughout the past few years in these meetings, how, how it's, it's all happened, it's all happened in public meetings, it's all happened in the open. There's comments about it, you know, behind closed doors, there was nothing behind closed doors, so...
But we didn't want to raise taxes.
We didn't want to raise taxes, we always said that, so...
You know, people just can't afford more, have more taxes to them, so... Well, I'm done with my rant, my little rave, but...
Sure, you know, I'd be happy to say it. Absolutely.
Yeah. You're right from there.
Everybody received the weights and measures report. We have the payment of claims of one million, four hundred thirteen thousand, six hundred seventy dollars and eight cents.
Second.
Second. A motion to pay the claims and a second rule call, please.
Mr. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes. Have questions or public comment at this time?
I was hoping the gentleman, Mr. Sims, that has been sitting down in the lobby could be here today from the 2020 census. They are really struggling finding people to go out and help them do the follow-up, and I believe those people work from February to end of March, May, four months, and they're paying eighteen fifty an hour plus mileage for those people who can work their own schedule, they can work part-time, full-time. But you just go on 2020census.gov and sign up, and then the training starts. And April 1st is the day that the census will, I want everybody to remember, but we want everyone to be counted, because it's so important for the money that comes back to us from the feds.
So I think they're, they're about halfway, they got about half the staff they need.
They need about eight hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred here from Delaware County just to do the follow-up.
So there, there's a employment opportunity.
Right.
Anyone?
You can come here to the courthouse, down in the lobby, Mr. Sims has been sitting down there, or you can go online.
Okay, anyone else? Make a motion.
Recede.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to recess. Hall in favor, say aye. Aye. We're in recess.